Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone this evening?
Fine, and you?
Good. I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for December 12th, 2016, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Here.
Dr. Davidson Amelius?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Seera?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion for the approval of the minutes from November 21st, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Kostic?
I'm staying.
Dr. Davidson Amelius?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. Awards and recognition. Peoria High Football Team. This evening, we welcome the coaches and players of the 2016 Class 5A State Champions from Peoria High Lions. Thank you. On Saturday, November 26th, 2016, the Peoria High School Lions earned the first championship trophy with a 62-48 win over Vermont Hills. PHS broke several records throughout the championship game, including total points scored in a championship game. The Lions also were the Big 12 Conference champs. And Senior Kendrick Green and Junior Karan Taylor were named to the Illinois Football Coaches Association All-State Team. Congratulations also to Head Coach Tim Thornton. Coach Thornton was named the Athletic Coach of the Year and Illinois Coach of the Year by Friday Night Football Magazine. Anybody familiar with that magazine? Coach, would you come to the podium with your team and share some additional highlights?
I just want to definitely thank you guys for having us. This is a great honor for us. I definitely want to thank everybody. You know, we get a lot of thanks and a lot of appreciation, and we've heard all that kind of stuff a million times, but it really takes everybody, and we really appreciate everything that our athletic director does, our principal, Dr. Coleman, and Dr. Karat, everything, all the way up to the top, and what you guys do for us makes all this possible. So, you know, we appreciate that immensely. When we set out for this season, you know, at the beginning of the year, you talk about your goals, you talk about your championships and that kind of stuff, and then you quickly put that kind of stuff away. And we just started hammering away at one play at a time, one practice at a time, and trying to do the best that we could at each one of those. Along the way, we've learned a lot of things, but our bottom line, our mission statement is create more opportunities. And the way that these guys work, the way that they approach every day, the way that they went to practice to get something out of it versus surviving it, put them in a position to just go get what they earned when we went and played for a state championship. So I appreciate them and the way that they worked hard, and again, thank you guys.
Would you introduce your team and your also colleagues?
I'll let them come up and do them one at a time, and they can...
Great, thank you.
But yeah.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kendrick Green. I'm a senior, and I play offensive and defensive line.
Where are you going to school, Kendrick?
I don't know yet.
My name is Kelvin Corruthers. I play outside linebacker, special teams specialist. You feel me? I'm trying to go to Eureka, though.
You're a senior. We know the president.
My name is Anthony Mo. I play safety, and I'm a junior.
My name is Jaden Holmes. I play corner and receiver, and I'm a junior.
My name is Markey Cook. I'm a sophomore, and I play center.
My name is Marshawn Cook. I play fullback, center, and whatever they need me to play. I'm a senior, and I haven't decided where I'm going to college yet.
My name is Tristan Lewis. I'm a senior, play offense and defense line.
My name is Davion Allen. I'm a freshman. I play running back.
My name is Orlando Moore. I play safety, and I don't know where I'm going to college yet.
My name is Kentay Horton, and I play quarterback, and I'm a sophomore.
I don't have much to say. Coach Bloom, I coach our outside linebackers and fullbacks, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work with kids that work this hard, and being excellent is important to them. It's just been good to work with them, so.
I'm Coach Aaron Montgomery. I'm a freshman coach, and then I coach scout players for our playoff run. I'm a Peoria High alum, so this was especially amazing to me.
I'm Coach Demarious Dixon, and I coached out everything, like outside the lines, everything. So it was awesome, because I got to do this with my long-life friend, been friends since sixth grade, and started at Woodrop together, then started at Peoria High together.
And then just as a matter of record, we had a lot that couldn't be here tonight, and hopefully you forgive them. We've been Riverman Games, and Bears Games, and Big Ten Championship Games, and City Hall tomorrow, and Rotary Clubs, and we're all over the place. So we're stretching them pretty thin, but we definitely appreciate it, and if they're available, we'll get them out. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. And while we're doing recognition, I'd like to recognize the principal of Peoria High, which is Dr. Annette Coleman. And for many of you who probably don't know, I wanted to recognize her also because of receiving her doctorate degree. We never did talk about it, but just a special honor to you. Thank you. And while we're recognizing, I'd also like to recognize Dr. Tanya Jenkins. Would you please stand? And Dr. Jenkins recently received her doctorate, and we are just so proud of everyone that does these advanced degrees.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. And while we're talking about excellence, we are very, very excited to go from athletics right into the arts. And everyone that knows me knows that arts is a passion of mine, and I'm so thrilled that we work and work with a district that appreciates the, all of those of us that are in our right brains. And so we tonight are going to be celebrating some of our students. Ms. Reddington, will you come up here too with me? We, I've been to a lot, this is 'tis the season to be jolly, and we've been going to a lot of concerts. Good night, guys. We've been going to a lot of concerts, wonderful concerts, in our district, but a couple of things that I saw that were so outstanding, the Nutcrackers, the season for the Nutcracker. And we have Peoria Public School students that are in these shows that are outside of our own school districts. So these students that we're recognizing tonight have been performing at the Civic Center, which is the largest stage that you can have in the city, and also they've been performing at ICC at their Performing Arts Center. So we thought it only appropriate that we acknowledge these students for representing our district so well, taking all of the time that they take to go to rehearsals and be their best in dancing and performing. So I asked Debbie to come on board with me and to recognize our students that we are so, so very proud of. We have certificates for you tonight, and we also have a medal for you that says congratulations and much appreciation for representing your district in such a proud way. And we have the principals of each school. So as we call your name, Debbie's going to help me call the names out, and we'll give you a medal.
Maya Perkins?
And tell her what school she's from.
Maya Perkins is, oh, right in front of me. Chart her out. Okay. Then we have Constance M. Bell from Keller. Cicely A. Crawford from Keller. Liliana L. Jones from Keller. Lots of Keller. Joel Marks from Richwoods IB. Ashley McGraw from Peoria High School. Liberty Pritchard from Peoria High School. Emily Coffey from Richwoods High School. You're welcome. Isabel Martinez from Washington Gifted. Nope, sorry. Okay, I sure will. And Forrester Atkins Dutrow from Williams. And I think that's it.
Okay. Did we get everyone that's here tonight? Will the principals stand up? From Washington? Principals are here in the house. Parents, if you would stand. We know parents, they couldn't get there without the parents. We're so very proud of you. Can you guys, taller ones, can you stand behind the little ones, and then scoochy in, and we'll get one big picture for everybody. Can the principals also join? Principals get in the picture?
Yes, please, thank you.
If you haven't seen the Nutcracker, you have to see it, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, it is wonderful.
Proud parents. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Paul, I can get the one to Washington tomorrow.
Oh, for me? Oh, wow. Okay, awesome. We have also received some Nutcracker candy and tea.
And a program so that you can...
And I might share. We'll see how that goes. Thank you so much. Ms. Jenkins, would you like to make some comments? I'm sorry? Would you like to make some comments? Did you want to make any comments?
I was going to give away the chocolate to anybody who would tell me. Okay, who, what is the name of the uncle? Anyone? The uncle in the, yes? Okay, he gets the chocolate. You may have to share that with your mom. Okay, and then... All right. So name one of the fairies with the premier dances. Anyone?
There's one back there.
Okay, Ash? Sugar Plum?
And let the kids get it.
All right. And finally, anybody know the website to the Peoria Ballet? Not, you already got one?
There's a little one. There's a little one over here.
O-R-G. All right. That was just a fun way to get audience participation, right? But thank you for recognizing us. What a joy.
She earned it. There you go. Thank you all.
And I just want to quickly give one more plug for Richwoods. They have their magical this Friday and Saturday, so if you have the chance...
Is it Friday and Saturday or Saturday and Sunday?
It's Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
I thought it was Friday and Saturday. So lots of concerts still going on.
It's a must-see.
As long as...
Ms. Reddington? Thank you so much. Every time we call on you, you never, you're always... Yeah, you're awesome. Thank you. And Dr. Bell, you might want to go out and congratulate your daughter.
My apologies. As long as we're talking about fine arts, the Easter Seals promotes a beautiful fine arts program called Penguin Project for students with special needs. They are the artists, they're the stars, and the mentors help them onstage and offstage. This year, they're doing Crazy for Me, January 13th and 14th? Oh, sorry. Crazy for you, crazy for somebody, and many of our children are our stars as well as mentors. So if you want to see something absolutely beautiful and heartwarming, East Peoria, East Light Theater, January 13th and 14th, and it's sponsored by Easter Seals. It's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Z. Ms. Reddington?
Tanya's going to give me a minute just to tell you that I was a recipient for the Community Foundation of Central Illinois Women's Grant this year, which I just promised I would give some publicity to them because they are wonderful. They gave me money, which it, we all know, costs a lot of money to get costumes and stuff, so thank you. Community Foundation of Central Illinois.
Ms. Reddington, Ms. Reddington, Ms. Reddington?
Yes.
How long have you been at this? Do you remember Sidney and Ballet?
Oh, yeah. I've been at it for a few years.
Okay, great, you're still good at it. And you're not going anywhere, are you? Thank you. And while we're still on recognition, I would like to recognize Dr. Karat for being nominated and accepted as a Woman of Influence. Any other recognitions? We do the Future Chef Promotion Winner? Mr. Streamer? Mr. Streamer? And Annalise again.
Remember us?
Yes.
From last year. I am here with Annalise Harris, our 2016 Future Chef Gold Medalist, a Sedexo Regional Medalist. And as we said, I was here, I think in June, and she had won all kinds of accolades and awards. She actually was selected, and I'm going to remove the veil here, as her recipe that she had won with was selected as a Sedexo Promotion Series Award winner. Five in the country were recognized with this. So I am here to present Annalise with her poster. We've got one hanging outside our office, too. I got one as well. She was recognized for her Good Morning Sunshine Whole Grain Pancake that she won, and did just a fantastic job. There were four others that had gotten this across the nation, so we know she missed being in one of the national finalist slots by a frog's hair. Tonight, just moments before I came here, I actually just sent off the information to the principals of fifth graders for this coming year's 2017 Future Chef Competition, and I, of course, said that we were here tonight providing more recognition and just kind of shows what hard work and talent can produce, and Annalise certainly typifies that. Now, what she's gotten, and we had all kinds of awards, I think, and gifts the night that she had won the regional award, she gets a six-month gift certificate for the Chef's Box Club. So she will have gadgets, she will have recipes, she will have all kinds of information to further her culinary pursuits coming over the next six months. That's for you. She won, and she has been waiting for this. She got a Ninja Blender for making all kinds of healthy items. She also got, and this she's really been waiting for, like my heart, I love breakfast, and she is just fighting with the bit to use this waffle maker. And then what else do we get? We got a KitchenAid Hand Mixer. So she has really been outfitted here to pursue her culinary efforts over the coming years, and we congratulate her. I just sent off the information to the principals about this year's event. It's actually Healthy Comfort Food is the category of recipes for this year, and I just want to let everybody know, the date has been changed. On the calendar, on our Peoria calendar, it says the fifth. We got bumped, but it's a good thing. The Pro Start Competition, our own culinary students who did just a phenomenal job last year in Chicago, their event got moved back, and it's on the same day that we had scheduled. So we had scheduled for the fifth, we're now going to be the 11th of March, and the culinary kids will be competing up at the McCormick Place on the 5th of March, Saturday the 5th. So we are just pleased to be involved with both of those, and hopefully someday you'll be a part of our competition over at McCormick Place. So thank you again for sharing this with us, and we congratulate Annalise.
Did you have anything to say? Yeah, Annalise, you've gotten taller since the last time we saw you. Those pancakes. All right, thank you. Most improved attendance for November? As part of Peoria Public Schools Attendance Counts Campaign, we are again recognizing our top three schools for highest percentage increase in attendance. So for the month of November, three schools have made significant gains. Thank you. I see we have representation from two schools. Lincoln is here, and Glen Oak is here, and I know Mr. Welch will represent Mark Bills. So the schools are, in third place, Mark Bills increased by 1.3 percent. Glen Oak, from last year's attendance to this year's for this month. Glen Oak's increase is 1.9 percent, and Lincoln's amazing 3.6 percent increase. So what I would like to do is ask Mr. Welch, were you able to have a conversation with Mrs. Rogers around the things that they're doing? And then I'll have Ms. Patty and Ms. Baron, Ms. Shaw, come up to the podium and please just, just a few words in terms of strategies that are being utilized to gain these amazing increases around attendance.
At Mark Bills, they are truly data-driven, and each Monday, they meet for a Monday morning meeting to start their week, and they go over various pieces of data, achievement data, but also attendance data. It's very, very motivating. It's a best practice, it's the best middle school practice, and they are very deserving of this award. And Principal, she does a fantastic job, very consistent with the attendance message.
Let's have Glen Oak first and then Lincoln. Yeah, thank you. Excuse me. Well, we're busy... I apologize. Could I ask you to hold for a second? At 7:00, we have a public meeting. And it's exactly 7:00. If you just hold on for a few minutes, we'll open the public meeting.
Built your right up and knocked your eye down.
I should have said that before you got started. Actually, it was supposed to come after that, but we'll do that at 7:00, since it's running a little behind. Tax rate hearing. Is there any public input on the tax rate hearing?
Yes, I...
I need a motion to open the tax rate hearing.
President Ross, I move that we move into a public hearing on the tax rate increase.
Can you say it? Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson Amelius?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. I apologize, it slipped up on me now. Audience participation?
Yes. Terry Knapp, 922 West Wilshire Drive. I'd just like to say that I supported, voted for, campaigned for the tax referendum. Last time, I can honestly say that I did not. I thought you won about this quite well, Mr. Adler. I thought your meeting at the stadium was a crucial part of my getting involved, because I think the stadium should remain green. I was and am disappointed, however, that before you even get the money, you float the bonds. To come out, whatever happened, to spend it as you get it, rather than spend $50 million this year and obligate the taxpayers of Peoria for the next 10 or 15 years to pay that money back, I think is just insidious. I think that shows what our government's about, the federal government, state government, the local government, the county government, and now the school district. I think it's rude to the taxpayers to do that, and it's especially egregious to the people that may have to pay the bill down the road. I would also say that in all the things that I've read, I have not seen a set aside of any money for the stadium. It's like somebody else has got to pay for this.
It's like somebody else has got to pay for this. We're going to take $50 million, and in two weeks, the stadium won't have any money if the people that are going to fund that, or have the idea to fund that, the stadium's going to get nothing. I think it's wrong, and I think last week, then Mr. Walter's comments, or two weeks ago, about putting this out for bids, I went home immediately and called my son, who's a millionaire and is in finance. And he called his friends, and they told me that they're assured, in their minds, that we could have done this for less money. And Mr. Walter simply asked that we wait a day or two, that we make four or five phone calls to people that should know, not put it out for bids necessarily, but surely find out whether or not that this is a proper bid. Now, I just can't, you know, after having voted for this, I had to say this, that, you know, I don't even understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public would like to speak on the tax rate hearing? Seeing none, I need a motion to close that.
President Ross, I move that we close the hearing on the tax rate increase.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Pastke.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye. Thank you, and I apologize. Would you please come back to the podium now and tell us all the good things that you do to increase your attendance?
At least that was short, I was starting to think it was going to... Attendance, what we do at Glen Oak for attendance, we have been giving classroom incentives when they have perfect attendance. We have incentives for tardies, we have a raffle for that, we have teachers that are calling, we have counselors that are calling, and we make sure the students know when they're missed every day. So it's just, and we keep in our newsletters, on our Sky Alerts, it's just keeping the, we need you here every day, and we say that every day, every student, every class, every day. So that's what we've been doing.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Ms. Avery's Assistant Principal at Glen Oak.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Barron at Lincoln. And what we do for attendance, we have an attendance committee, of course, and we have a lot of initiatives for the students, drawings every Friday for hot shifts here on time students, and they're so excited for that. Recently, I think we have like seven days left, but we're doing like the 12 Days of Christmas of perfect attendance. And so the classrooms that have 100% on the 12th day will get pizza parties. And so we're just doing like fun, things like that to motivate the students. And so, and also the staff, you know, calls parents, and we have a lead. And also for perfect attendance, every nine weeks, we individually, we go around to every student in the school and give them a perfect attendance certificate in the classroom and recognize them in front of their students. And we ask them, you know, do you have any advice for your classmates? So just things like that, and they really seem to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the plan that you've been showing us and staff for the month of November. Most, it says most improved attendance, and continue to do what you're doing, it's working. Thank you, Mrs. Barron.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. Once again, congratulations to Superintendent Dr. Sharon DeMilon Karat, named one of six Women of Influence in the December issue of Inter Business Issues. I have that copy right here so you can see the cover. Each December, IBI highlights Women of Influence, women who are making a difference in Central Illinois. The magazine profile chronicles Dr. DeMilon Karat's childhood influences in Dominica, West Indies, her professional career, and her goals for Peoria Public Schools, and her leadership philosophy and style. We encourage staff, parents, and students to take time to read the profile by following the link on the district homepage. Thank you.
I believe each board member has a copy of that. Thank you. Other announcements? Back to you.
Illinois Certified Teachers, December graduates, pending certification, teacher aides, bus drivers, school nurses, and others are invited to join Peoria Public Schools next Monday, December 19th, 2016, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center for our Second Annual December Hiring Fair. Let me say that again. Monday, December 19th, 2016, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center for our Second Annual December Hiring Fair. Visit, please, www-peoriapublicschools.org/employment for a full list of openings and to start the application process. No appointment necessary for this special event. Interviews with school administrators will be available on the spot, and letters for recommendation to hire may be offered. You know of a December teacher graduate, please help us spread the word.
Thank you. Mr. Sierra.
Just a reminder that the holiday break begins for Peoria Public School students on Thursday, December 22nd, with an hour early dismissal for all students. All district offices will be closed on December 23rd, December 26th, and January 2nd. As the holiday break approaches, so do high school finals. Best of wishes to all high school students as they wrap up their semester. Faculty will return to work on Friday, January 6th, and students will return on Monday, January 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements? Ms. Jackson.
A reminder to parents, teachers, students in grades 6 through 12 to complete the Illinois State Board of Education Five Essential Surveys. The survey window is open until January 16th. We've already had a great response from many schools, but want to make sure we hit the required threshold so that we can receive a full report from the ISBE to further improve the culture and climate of our buildings. This survey is a key indicator for our strategic plan. A link for the survey is on the district website and on each school's webpage.
Thank you. Other announcements?
I've got one more.
Mr. Walter.
This coming weekend, Richwoods High School presents the 43rd Annual Madrigal Dinners on Saturday, December 17th at 6:30 p.m. and Sunday, December 18th at 1:30 p.m. in the RHS A Castle Terrazzo. Tickets are $25. The three-course hog roast dinner is catered by Hickory River Smokehouse. For tickets, call 309-224-8805, or email richwoods.choirs@gmail.com. Many Peoria Public Primary and Middle Schools are hosting holiday concerts this week and next week. The Peoria High School Preparatory School for the Arts Orchestra and Band Concert will be tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. Check the district website calendars for details on all of the scheduled concerts. Look for the dates highlighted in purple, signifying a fine arts event. Come out to support the hard work of students and music teachers and enjoy the spirit of the season.
Thank you, Ms. Pastke.
Thank you. Good evening. Knoxville Center for Student Success will hold its mid-year graduation ceremony on Thursday, December 15th, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Commons at Woodruff Career and Technical Center, followed by a lunch for staff, students, and family members. Approximately 25 students are expected to graduate. Congratulations in advance to all of the graduating students.
Thank you. Other announcements? Seeing none. District presentations, bond sales timeline. Mr. Nicholas?
Kevin.
Good evening.
His name is not on here.
Are you bringing it up?
Kevin Hyde, Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Hyde.
Tell him it's mine.
That's the company.
We prepared a tentative preliminary timeline for the first phase of the district's financing, which is anticipated to be approximately $27.5 million. The board meetings are kind of highlighted in black, those are the things that we wanted to particularly call your attention to, so you can see things that might be happening at the time of the board meetings. The first highlighted area is for the board meeting on January 9th, at which time the bond attorneys will have prepared by the 22nd for your review what's called the authorizing resolution, the resolution of intent to issue the bonds. This will then be published shortly thereafter in the Journal Star. I think we have it down right now for the 13th, I'm sorry, for the 11th. There will also be a public hearing required. Anytime we issue bonds, a public hearing is required, and there's also a notice that will be posted as well, and that public hearing, in this timeline, is scheduled for January 23rd. We'll be sitting idle then as far as board action for a couple of months while we're doing other things back, kind of behind the scenes to get things ready for the bond issue. The PGAV will start the preparation of the financial feasibility study probably about the 24th of January. That takes about a month to complete, so we probably won't have that back until towards the end of February. Once we have that back and completed, we can then fine-tune the structure of the bonds and have that ready to go into the preliminary official statement and the credit packages that need to go out to the bond rating agencies and the bond insurance, and to get that going, and schedule ratings calls and due diligence calls, et cetera. Once we have all of that back, we can start then to go ahead and price the bonds. On April 10th, we would theoretically, or plan to have a, what's called a parameters resolution, and you are similar, seeing similar resolutions with respect to the PBC bonds, basically a resolution that authorizes the sale of the bonds, subject to the parameters therein, and based on the timing of the bonds, and the actual sale will occur later than that. Generally, we don't like to price bonds on a Monday, your board meetings are Mondays, nor do we like to price them on Fridays. They're not good days in the market in general, fewer people participating, and so we try to avoid Fridays and Mondays. So we probably look to price sometime early the next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere in there. And then at the board meeting on the 24th, the board would basically, the officers would sign the closing documents, there's really no further board action required at that point, but the closing documents would need to be signed, we would then have to file everything with the appropriate places, including the county clerk, and then the closing would take place approximately May 1st in that particular timeframe. Should give funds available in time for construction for the summer's projects. Again, this is the first phase of the issuance. We have to stay within the IRS guidelines, which indicate that we can't issue bonds today or within a time period of three years, we have to spend the money down. So we can't issue a five-year bond worth of projects all at one time because we'd be violating those IRS regulations. So again, this would take care of the construction for about the first three years, and then come back shortly after that.
Questions of Mr. Hyde.
Thank you.
You have questions?
We have this scheduled in your package.
You should have a copy of the schedule in your packet as well. You must have done a good job, no questions.
Or clear as mud, right? One or the other. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our audit presentation. Clifton Lawson, it used to be Clifton Dunne, it used to be.
Yeah, we changed recently.
Your name, sir?
I am Adam Polley, Principal of Clifton Larson Allen. Oh, good, we got it up there. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me. So I conducted the detailed review of the audit engagement during the year. The engagement principal could not make it here tonight, Hope Wheeler, took care of the principal duties. We issued four separate deliverables, being the audit opinion on the financial statements, a separate report for the AFR, which goes to the State Board of Education, and then two required communication letters that we have. And really, all I am going to do is I'm going to try to touch on all those with this presentation here very briefly and at a high level. So if we could actually, yeah, we'll start on slide three there. The first letter I wanted to touch on is called the Letter to Governance. Honestly, this is largely boilerplate language. This is an opportunity for us, as the auditors, to communicate to governance if there was any issues that came up during the audit, any significant disagreements or things of that nature. I'm happy to say that there weren't any. It does denote any new accounting policies that were adopted, any significant estimates that are in the financial statements, as well as any adjusting entries or things of that nature. Skip to slide four, that's just the rest of the Letter to Governance. The other letter that we issued that is required is the Management Letter. And I don't have a slide on that, I wasn't planning on going into it in detail. What the Management Letter is, is an opportunity for us to show any other matters, if you will, or recommendations that we came across during the audit. What's in the Management Letter are not considered findings. Findings would be more of a material weakness or significant deficiency in nature. These other items on the Management Letter are just other recommendations that we came across for consideration. So I was not going to go into that in detail. The findings we'll touch on in a little bit. Slide five, going to the financial statements, highlights real briefly. As I mentioned, we issued an audit report, as well as the AFR that goes to the state. We issued a clean or unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give, on the financial statements, as well as the single audit report, which is the major federal programs. Briefly, the statement of net position on page one, total assets and deferred outflows for the district as of year end, it was $293 million. On the flip side, the liability and deferred inflow side, it's $287 million, and the residual net position or equity of the district as of year end was $6 million. Now, that statement is on the full accrual basis, so this includes any capital asset activity, any long-term debt or liabilities. So honestly, it's probably not the typical presentation that you might see on a month-to-month basis. Going to slide six, touching on the footnotes, there's plenty of footnotes that support the balances, if you're interested, on the financial statements and the activity. Just a few notes here, it does note that the district had nearly $5 million in capital asset additions during FY '16. 2.6 of the bonds were paid down, as well as 4.8 million of the capital leases. And the pension liability, which was brand-new in FY '15, still relatively new for FY '16, which was a very large number, you may remember, that was put on the books, new accounting standards last year, that amount increased, that liability, $6 million, to bring the total as of year end to 52 million. So going to slide seven, I have a few slides here that are very, very high-level. This first slide is for the revenue, and I can tell from here, it's hard to read, hopefully it's a little easier to read up there. But this is organized by fund. The blue bar, the first bar, is going to be the budget for FY '16 of revenues. The second bar, the purple one, is the actual revenues from FY '15, and the reddish one is actual from FY '16. Now, as far as all the funds are concerned, the balances, there's nothing that necessarily stands out a whole lot. Outside, I do want to explain something on the first column, which is the Educational Fund. The reason why there's some change there, it basically comes down to what's called the on-behalf payment. The state of Illinois makes pension contributions directly to TRS on behalf of the district. So this, for accounting purposes, treatment has to be shown as a revenue, as well as an expense, so it has a $0 impact to the district, and that number changes each and every year. Well, the actual amount of the on-behalf payment last year, that's reflected in the second column, was $22 million. So the district, coming into FY '16, had budgeted about $24 million. Now, this is a number that's very hard to anticipate, especially with the new changes in the net pension liability and the accounting standards surrounding pensions. So the number that actually ended up coming in as being that on-behalf number was 42 million. That's why it looks like there's such a big discrepancy. But again, this has $0 impact on the bottom line, it's really just an accounting treatment thing. If it wasn't for this on-behalf payment, it would not appear that the district was over budget and revenue, and probably more importantly, on the next slide, it's similar on the expense side. So I just wanted to explain that, that's why the Ed Fund looks a little out of whack, it pretty much just comes down to that on-behalf payment. So I'll actually go ahead and skip ahead to slide nine, which are the fund balances as of year end. This does not include any capital asset or long-term liability information. The blue bar is going to be 2014, the purple bar is 2015 year-end balances, and then on to 2016, just to give kind of a trend over the past few... a trend over the past few years. Fund balances between 15 and 16 did go down. I think it is worth noting that the decrease in FY16 of about $4 million was significantly less of a decline than it was in FY15, which was about $14 million. So the last slide I promised I'd touch on were the findings that we came across during the audit. There were three findings. All three of them were repeats from the prior year, and I imagine they've been findings for a little while. Really, the nature of all three of them are pretty similar. The first finding is that we, as the external auditor, help the district put together the AFR. The second one is we help the district put together the financial statements. Along with that comes cash to accrual, adjusting entries that we assist with. And the sixth, or the third one is we help assist put together the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So all three of these realistically are findings that we have to put in because we, as the external auditor, cannot be considered part of the district's internal controls. So that's why these are findings. I think it is worth noting, and there is a note up there, that these findings are not uncommon for an accrual basis school district especially, and they're not at all uncommon for governments in general that I come across. So in talking with district management, they do plan to actively work to address any of the risks that may be associated with it and considering cost benefits of addressing these findings as much as possible during the next fiscal year. To kind of put in context, I did go back and look at the past couple of years. FY15 had four findings, including these three. Actually, FY14 had nine findings. So to me, it's clear that the district has an attitude of compliance and continual improvement. Transitioning to a close here, this was actually my first year having a significant part of the audit with the district. And, you know, I just wanted to take the time to thank the finance department and management that we worked with. I thought the audit went well. The finance department was very cooperative, very responsive, and was very helpful in understanding any questions that we might have. So I just wanted to take the time to thank them. And that's really all I have. I realize it's very short. Hopefully, it's not too short, but it's very, very high-level view, so. Happy answer. Any questions?
Questions?
They all have those reports at their spots.
Yes, we do have that.
All four statements that you talked about are in your files. You have the...
We have, yes.
...of your places. That goes with the... ...the audit.
So it's quite a bit more.
This is the clip.
That was the executive summary.
Any questions, comments on the audit presentation? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are now at the place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment right of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personnel concern, we will, there is a staff person that will assist you. In addition, the board members all have accessibility through phone calls and also emails, and we are listed on the website for PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling and sharing those with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Napp.
Do you say Sharon?
Terry Napp.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the board and those of you that chose to recognize the students tonight in the fine arts. I think it's very, very important. I wish that you would go back. I've talked about research before, and you new board members need to go back and research back to prior to 2010 when Lathan came here. Our fine arts program has tanked big time. I went to a meeting at the library with the Jerry Brookhart Arts and Education Committee. I serve on the Lincoln Committee that raised $1.2 million pennies, the district's students, for the statue down at the courthouse. And we recognize 16 seniors at the various county high schools every year. The dinner will be at Cater Inn again on the 16th. You're all invited to attend to support your students from the various high schools in Peoria that received that award. I know I will be there. Been there for 13 years. The meeting spilled over into the concept of the Jerry Brookhart recognition of the students in fine arts at the county courthouse that occurs April 19th to May 24th. I know many of you have been down to those. I thought it was important to give them a perspective because they do tremendous things in recognizing those students. I also went to the Veterans Day Parade. Three students from Manual carried the banner for the Manual Band. Behind the banner was seven drums. No instruments, seven drums. The Fine Arts High School, Peoria High, marched in that same parade. 19 people in the Fine Arts High School Band. I know that will change now that we have Mary Jo Pappish Thompson, Sharon Reed, and my friend Tanya Jenkins working with Sharon Karat to improve this. But it's been a disaster for the last 10 years. And I know you got to start somewhere, and I hope you keep the research so that you can see, hopefully, next year, 25 people in the central band and a few instruments in the Manual Band. That would be interesting as well as appreciated. I think you need to look at that. I also had the experience this week to be with two students, former students from Quest. They were brother and sister. One had graduated from Manual, the other's a junior at Manual. Boy, junior, girl who had graduated. I spent about an hour with them, and they praised the Manual academic program. They disdained the Quest academic program and said they left because there was nothing offered to them academically at Quest. I throw that to you as another bone to look in and research what's going on at Quest. I think it's very important for you to be informed. I talked to another mother from Quest at a basketball game. I went to see the team play. They have an excellent basketball team at Quest. The mother told me that her son is bullied daily. She drops him off. He actually went to Peoria Christian for a time and goes to Quest. Says he gets out of the car, and when she leaves him at school, he does this. And she says, "What are you doing?" He says, "I'm putting on my game face to go to school today because if I don't do that, I'm going to be bullied all day." So I just throw that out to you. These are just people that I know that I happened to run into last week. I think you need to be aware of that, and I think you need to look into it. The mayor's meeting, I want to comment about that. Saw the mayor's meeting with 350 people. I did not get a chance to make that meeting, but I'm sure that nobody pointed out that they took in $83 million from the herb boat and never spent a nickel on kids. And they wonder why this community is recognized as not being friendly to low-income minority students. That's one of the reasons. Put in new road streets and gutters down in the warehouse district so those people who bought the property cheap can become instant millionaires. You know, that's just a sad situation. I live at 922 West Woolshire Drive. They don't even have sidewalks. The kids who walk to Lindbergh, the school will walk right by my house, don't have sidewalks. Treewind has no sidewalks. But the warehouse district got new sidewalks. Warehouse district got new turnabouts, new streets, new everything. This community has their priorities mixed up.
Thank you, Ms. Napp. Ms. Cruz?
Whatever I say or have said, please believe that I support the students, teachers, administrators, and this board more than ever, with a special interest in Manual. Running this district is not easy. Federal and state leadership will soon do all in their power to establish more charter schools and the voucher system. We need to do everything in our power now, not later, to ensure that Peoria Public Schools will be a viable choice for Peoria and West Peoria families. We would lose money and probably our best students to charters and vouchers. Private schools have and will find ways to reject students who do not need, who do not meet exceptional academic standards and/or create discipline problems. Assessing my own education in District 150, I know that there was little or no toleration for misbehaving students and limited places for Afro-American children. When I began my teaching career in 1962, I experienced the unmitigated joys of watching Afro-American young people and adults take their place in our school system. Even so, that was a slow process. In the 1960s, Adrian Hinton and Audrey Gibson became the first Black high school teachers in Peoria. During my early and even not-so-early years at Manual, I realized that Black students were not enrolled in enriched or advanced classes. I do believe that those of us who taught basic classes realized this inequality and did all that we could to challenge our students to achieve at levels that would prepare them for the work world and/or college, and many of them have done that. For the last 20 years, I have seen a trend that is troublesome to me. Please try to understand my fears. Because so many in leadership positions today are those, including most of you around this horseshoe, who witnessed, including me, and even suffered all the inequities of the past. I see an attempt to compensate for those past evils by allowing today's students an academic and disciplinary latitude that simply does not encourage a path to their success. This process began before I retired. Teachers were already encouraged to give mostly passing grades, and non-tenured teachers were in jeopardy if they were not lenient with grades and behavior. Consequences for bad behavior were often delayed for days because the deans did not have the time to deal with all the referrals, and the consequences were not deterring bad behavior. In fact, bad behavior increased. My own observations lead me to believe that not much has changed. In fact, the teaching environment is even worse. I think those who make the rules but are not in the classroom do not fully understand that teachers cannot teach and handle discipline problems at the same time. I believe most of our schools follow a policy that a disruptive student must remain in the classroom at least until a referral is written. Changing that policy alone would resolve a considerable number of problems. Give teachers credit for knowing when a student is keeping the others from learning. I believe that way too much money is being spent on programs that promise to change behavior but do not contribute to content learning necessary to the next level of a student's education. Administrators find negative consequences to be too punitive. If these programs designed to make students feel good about themselves are working, I would applaud their use to replace the traditional consequences. However, that is where transparency is of the utmost necessity. You must be honest with yourselves and parents and the community, but not so, in collecting and analyzing data, sorry. You are good at providing us with positives, and that is appreciated, but not so good at presenting the negatives. The negatives are not your fault unless you are ignoring all that data, not listening to teachers, and not recognizing that parents, black and white, are fleeing the schools because of discipline problems. The same attention needs to be paid to inflated grades, and there is no denying this practice is followed in our schools. Inflated grades help you increase the graduation rate, but you need to request and analyze data as to whether or not these inflated grades lead to success in the work world or college for our students. And please, my plea for summer school continues. Thank you.
Is there any response to audience presentation?
I think when Mrs. Cruz, I'm sure that when you said Adrian was the first Black teacher, I'm sure Alice Taylor's in heaven pointing her finger at you. Alice Taylor was one of our very first African-American teachers. Knowing her...
And Audrey, I still...
Yeah. She's up there pointing at you.
Response? I'm sorry. Mr. Sierra?
Good evening. I would just like to support Ms. Sharon Cruz as someone who is an attendee at Manual Academy at this moment. I definitely agree with the inflated grade system. I'm aware now that instead of putting zeros in for assignments, now our teachers can only put a minimum of 40% of that grade in. I feel like, I feel like that's a little bit devastating because we're not, even if the student doesn't deserve that grade, I mean, a minimum, you can still pass with the D as long as you pass like three tests and then have that 40% grade input. I feel like we're putting students to the next grade level, and either A, they're not ready to move on academically, or they're just not ready to move on in a maturity level as well. And also with the behavior support at Manual, something that I find is we do, and we do admin based on population. And personally, from someone who comes from a high need environment, I feel like it should be based on need because I feel like there's times where we have a great administration team at Manual, but they are not able to juggle all of the behavior at once. And it leads to a disadvantage to the classroom because then teachers are forced to keep children in the classroom because our administration isn't able to take care of behavior problems at that moment. And then it leads to, one time, I was tardy to class in tardy sweeps. I didn't, I didn't get confronted to that until a month later, ended up with a lunch detention. That just shows something so simple getting addressed so, and so late. So I feel like that brings, it highlights how bigger issues don't get addressed until a later time period as well. So I would just, I mean, I just wanted to bring attention on how it's a very high need. And when we're doing like the recognitions for schools and stuff, you don't see that many schools from District 1.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Information items. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Over $2,500. The questions or comments?
There were a few questions, but we did respond to those in writing in advance of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on November 21st, we received one new request, and this request is pending. There were, also, I mentioned there were two pending requests noted on the November 21st board request, I mean, board report. Those were filled. So to date, our request summary is 60 requests for this calendar year for a cost of $4,149.50.
Thank you. Mr. Adler, consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, total of $10,090.17 a year to date, $154,106.82. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is the human resources report. Item five is the addendum number one to the contract with Peoria Notre Dame Youth Baseball. Item five is the addendum number one to the contract with Peoria Notre Dame Youth Baseball. Item number six is the resolution to amend the lease with the Peoria Billings Commission and authorize levy and collection of annual tax. Item number seven is the temporary approval and payment of bills. And item number eight is the property tax levy. And I would request that items six and eight be pulled for separate votes.
Are there any other items that any board member would like to pull for a separate vote or a separate discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Can I amend the motion to that we approve items one through five and seven?
Okay. Thank you. With the exception of six and eight. But, okay, thank you. The motion?
Second.
Sorry, they've been moved in second with the exception of six and eight. Are there any... Mr. Shaw?
Well, actually, there was an original number, motion in second from over here.
Okay, that's what I got.
Thank you.
Ms.... Discussion on any of those items?
If you could clarify, please, are we... There were two motions on the floor, or there was a motion and amendment. And what do we sit with those now, please?
Well, we have an amended motion that excluded six and eight.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Kastick. Dr. Davidson, Aviles.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion clear. Seven ayes, motion clear.
Okay. Item number six, motion?
I move that we adopt item six from the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Primarily just to pull these two for so that we have the separate vote tallies.
Would you like the two together or I was going to do six first?
Separate's fine for me.
Okay. Any discussion on item six?
Mr. ... Well, sorry, I didn't read it close enough. What do we anticipate the financial impact of item six to be for the district?
Mr. Willis?
We have a goal of $2 million in interest savings. Right now, the bond market's off a little bit, and the reason we're asking for you to reauthorize us to do refinancing later is we're trying to wait until market conditions are more favorable and we can generate the $2 million savings. If we were to... If we would have sold bonds after the election before November 30th, we wouldn't have generated and still are unable to generate the savings that we believe are needed, you know, to move forward on the deal. So basically, we need more time for things to settle down.
Okay. So we wouldn't move forward on this if there was no savings involved, right?
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Walter?
Mr. Willis, am I correct that we only have really one shot to do that on a refinancing? You can't do multiple attempts?
Right. Right. Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, that explains your delay and I understand that, but it's like you can't do it and then if the markets get better, you can reissue. You have... You get one shot at the bite of that apple, is that correct?
Right. Right.
Other discussion? Would you please call the roll? Item number six.
Mrs. Kastick? Aye. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Item number eight, property tax levy.
I move that we adopt the property tax levy as detailed in item number eight of the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on property tax levy? Okay. Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kastick?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion clear.
On the deliberation agenda, suspension review. Who's... Mr. Shaw?
Item nine, suspension review. I move that the suspension review on the report dated December 12, 2016 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Kastick?
Any discussion?
I'll have a second.
Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Kastick? Aye. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Number 10?
Expulsions. I move that the expulsions report dated December 12, 2016 be approved as presented.
Second.
No discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Kastick?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion clear.
Revocation of expulsions held in abeyance.
Skip one.
Expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance.
I move that the expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated December 12, 2016 be approved as presented.
Second.
No comments?
Mrs. Kastick?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And now revocation of expulsions held in abeyance.
I move that the revocation of expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated December 12, 2016 be approved as presented.
Second.
No discussion? Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Kastick? Aye. Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Revocation of board probation.
I move that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated December 12, 2016 be approved as presented.
Second.
No... Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Kastick?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members. Are there any? Mr. Adler?
So frequently from the horseshoe and in the audience, we've recognized the great role that the community plays in supporting our kids and our schools. A number of us around the horseshoe have discussed here for a few weeks about the possibility of exploring a community service graduation requirement as a means for both preparing our kids to go out and serve their communities and also in recognition of the contributions that the community groups do make here to our schools. So I'd like to suggest that the Policy Committee work with the administration and explore the feasibility of implementing such a requirement.
Thank you. Or re-implementing.
Or re-implementing.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I just had a request that the administration, if they could by January... We had... I had made a request at the last board meeting about exploring the possibility of having the public TV access, if we could maybe get an update in the January meeting. Thank you.
Do you have...
No, no, no.
Dr. Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Edberg, you, I think, one time reminded me that you are never not a board member. And so nevertheless, I endeavored to not be a board member past week. As some of you know, I teach at Bradley University, and we were hosting a number of students from out of state. One from Washington State, one from Florida, some from Tennessee. In any event, part of the activities that we have with these students from out of state was as part of the master's program online to visit schools as part of the course they're taking. Going from community service, there's another type of service when you are not a community member but a professional member of our educational community, and that's called professional service. Professional service is when you do something for the profession for which you are not paid but that improves upon the profession. I would like to thank publicly the counseling staff and principal at Manual Academy for hosting us, and in particular, they were there, there was a career fair going on at Manual when we were there. And it was a time when it could have been very difficult for them to host a guest, but in point of fact, not only did they host guest students from Bradley, they showed us the outstanding work that goes on in Peoria Public Schools. And I must tell you that these graduate students from out of the state were quite impressed. And they fed us Chick-fil-A, but we won't talk about that. Oh, and at the career fair, professional service? Less you be seduced into thinking that it's only teachers who engage in professional service administrators. I happen to meet two tradespersons who work for Peoria Public Schools, one an electrician and one a painter, and they were hosting a table for the trades for painting and to become electrician. They were taking time out of their day to perform service for our district, to talk to students about the work that they do and the possibilities for them. I think that is outstanding. I think that is just incredible. Also, to thank Mr. Elliott over at Bridgewoods. He hosted us in the afternoon, and we got a chance to see his counselors at work in the field. In the past, I must say, Mr. Elliott was also principal at Peoria High School last year when we hosted a similar group, and I did not... I'm delighted to make that announcement then. So I would like to thank the professional, technical, service staff, pretty much everybody who makes us a credible place to have. Absolutely amazing, outstanding, and I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Other suggestions or presentations by board members? I have a couple. One, I'd like to see us have a presentation on our technical school and all of the aspects and all of the programs that go on there. I get questions all the time. People still say, "Well, you've closed Woodridge. You don't have the technical school anymore." So if we could get a presentation on all the things that go on there, all of the positive things that go on there. And also, I don't know, some of us went to the state conference a couple of weeks ago, and I wasn't sure. I've got some extra books. Maui, who owns a learning center, did everyone get a book?
I didn't.
That was at the general session?
I didn't.
Okay. This is a very powerful book. I've gotten about halfway through it yet.
I read it. It's very good.
Okay. Did you get it? Okay. Well, this was one of the general sessions that we went to, and would you like to read one?
I was sure, why not?
Okay. Thank you. And so, you know, when you finish it, you could pass it around or whatever. But I think you'll find it really enlightening where he came from and where he is now and how you can go from almost nowhere to somewhere.
To Harvard.
Yes. And so, we... I've enjoyed many of the sessions. I mean, the new topic is the transgender laws around transgender and that kind of thing. I saw many of us in the same sessions interested in some of the same thing. So perhaps if someone else wanted to highlight at our first meeting in January, that would be great. Anyone that went to the statewide conference. Okay? Reports from board members, board committees. Mr. Adler?
The... Trying to remember the dates. So we... The Billings Committee met sometime after the last board meeting.
Yes, we did.
Thank you for your outstanding record.
Yeah.
To keep all those records.
And so we talked about next steps for the... Using the proceeds of the facility sales tax to upgrade our facilities. And obviously, we've been moving along on those action items as well. But we also talked about the one proposal we received on the Peoria Stadium from the... And I'm going to keep saying the name until we come up with a better unnamed, but the Adam White team. So had a good conversation in that meeting about some of the particulars of the overview proposal. We have submitted some follow-up questions to Adam and his team, and we are looking to meet with them on the 22nd of December, 8:00 a.m., media room, anyone that's interested. But we will continue to go into more detail about how that will... What they propose could play out and impact the future of the stadium.
Okay. Other committees?
Policy Committee, next meeting is December 21st at 9:30. So we haven't met since last board meeting.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yeah. The Parent Advisory Committee met with Dr. Jenkins' group. We will be working together with them to work on some things to get parents involved and students involved and some information that... Things that teachers can use to work with parents and students. So we had a large group that was at the meeting, and I appreciated that. So hopefully, we'll have some things, some recommendations and some things laid out we can be discussing.
Okay. That's all the committees? All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Do we need a second?